One bag, but I will go along my.
Members please, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the full council, Ramsgate Town Council. On this Wednesday, the 27th of March. First of all, could I just ask you to turn your mobile phones off or to silent? So we have no interruptions. Thank you. And obviously, welcome to any residents or anybody else who's not a resident. Who's looking at this live this evening. Welcome to you. So let's get straight on to the agenda. So item one, apologies.
We have apologies from councillors Wing, Hudson, Young, Driver, Crittenden. All unwell apart from councillor Young.
Thank you. A lot of it appears. Item two, any declarations of interest in the items on the agenda this evening? Take the silence as a no. Thank you. Item three, public request to speak. I think we have none. No one's turned up to that. At this point, members, you would see that an item was left off the agenda, which is from the town clerk who can't be here this evening. And it's in relation to our active Ramsgate leaflet spend approval. So because this needs to be done in this financial year, which is coming to an end very shortly. This needs to be dealt with this evening. So what I need to do, I'm asking you to suspend this particular standing order to allow this matter to be heard. So and nine B of the standing order says, no motion may be moved at a meeting unless it is on the agenda and the mover has given written notice of its wording to the proper officer at least five clear days before the meeting. So I'm going to propose that we suspend standing orders and councillor Nixon's seconded that. Can I have all in agreement? Thank you. Anybody against? No, thank you. So that's carried. The matter is in relation to the report from our active Ramsgate project manager, Simon Davis. And the report is there in its relation to spend approval for leaflets. And the recommendation is, or sorry, the recommendation is for you to members to consider approving the expenditure of £11,019.75 to print 75,000 promotional leaflets. Agreeing to the appointment of Sharp Printing, Broadstairs to deliver this work and agreeing to via these monies from the current financial year to financial year 24, 25.
Has this been through?
I believe it. It hasn't been through? No, in that case, no. No, not discussed it or approved it? No. No, so that is no then. Councillor Green. Members, anybody got any comments on this at all?
Does it have to be a local printer?
It doesn't have to be, but I guess that's something that we would prefer to do is to do. Would be to do it locally and I guess obviously the town clerk's not here, so I can't ask her and Simon's not here either. So I would imagine that they've been around locally to get the better prints on this. Right, yeah. Like Lanes printers, Ramsgate, Broadstairs, Uncoated for 25,000 runs. That was 12,540. Sharp Printing, what was that? It's 11,019.75. Stewart's Coffee Shop worked out at 9,750. So but that's what we've been asked to do. But I'm not sure whether they're coated or not coated. Sharp Printing is considered to be the best value for quality of output.
Yes, it says though, it does say.
Yeah, it does say that, but.
The cheapest they recommend is sharp.
Yeah.
Could I just ask you these to go into the visitor centre downstairs? Is that the idea? It's just, I'm for it and I would, yes. However, I've done an awful lot of business with Seawood's coffee shop over the years and quality is excellent.
I think we all have. I think we all have.
So I would be happy to go with the coffee shop just because it's the cheapest. No better than the other one.
No, no.
Shops quality is.
They're taking, you know, the thousands of our menu and our elections, all the done by the stewards as well.
Okay, Councillor Green.
Must say, I'm not happy about the way this has come to us. I don't really understand why it wasn't put on the agenda. And also with nobody here to talk to. You know, it's not right. It's not the way we should be treated.
Well, I only found out about this late this afternoon. So it was either to give you a chance to at least see it. Because it was, the other thing was not to put it on at all. But I think the town clerk was worried about the budget and that she could take the money out of this year's budget and carry that through. But you know, obviously, as the Chair of F and GP.
P S I wouldn't inform you.
It's up to you, members, whatever you.
What would happen if we don't approve?
Well, you've got, you should, everybody's got that, haven't they?
Maybe it'll come out of next year's budget.
It would need to come out of next year's budget. Yeah, quite right.
Which I don't believe town promotion will have budget for.
Yeah. And it's not in town promotion.
Sorry.
Yeah.
We approve it, but it doesn't necessarily have to be spent. Can we do that? Approve it out of this year's budget, but then we wait for the rest of people to look at it. We all make the side.
It's up to you, members. You can do that. You can do that. It's up to you if you think that's the right way forward. If councillor Green is the Chair of F and GP, a chance to talk to the town clerk. And obviously, if town promotion hasn't got the budget, then it can't come out of there.
So in that approving it with regards to us saying that Seawood might be the better.
If you, again, if that is what you want, if that is what members want. So if someone wants to put a motion forward with that.
What do you propose?
I propose that if we were going to go forward with this, we'd use Seawood's coffee shop. And so that we ring fence that money. But I would like it to come back to a council meeting before that was action. So it's something to talk about.
I'm sure, is it F and GP's the next one? Is it Dave? I can't remember when the next day. Planning, but we can't go to that. So the nearest one would be next to F and GP and you'd be Chair of that anyway, David. So it could go back to that with that money ring fenced and go to Stewart's.
It does say, I mean, obviously, it says we expect to resolve that. Ah, we're keeping progress on distribution ahead of the summer season. But mainly not going to get anything before the Easter holiday, are we?
No.
So I mean, we're just waiting for less than a month.
This is purely in relation to the budget.
Exactly. So I'm happy with what I've just said, but anyway, some.
Okay, so Emery, that's your motion. Jane, second. Members, you okay with that? All in favour, please show. Okay, that's carried. Then we'll do that. Thank you very much. Right. Item four is minutes of council meetings. That's to approve the following minutes. The 31st of January 2024 and the 28th of February 2024. And I will propose those minutes. Seconded. Anybody got any comments on those? Members, no. All in favour, please show. Thank you. It's in ones done. Item five is grants and events fund. And that's to receive the report of the deputy town clerk, who we luckily enough have here this evening. In relation to one application for the events fund received from St George's Church.
Okay, members, this is the events fund obviously for the next time of two years with a budget of £45,000. Grant to mainly is £40,700. One application has been received requesting £3,520. The reason I'm bringing this before council is that it's an event fund application. The only one received for an event before the new process of funding begins. So rather than just say, no, I'm not bringing it. I thought I'd bring it to you, but obviously decisions are yours. So this is St George's Church and the Great British Carnival. It's a St George's Day spring parade on Sunday, the 28th of April. Total projected expenditure is £13,280. Excuse me. And the grant requested is £3,520, which is the residue of the funding required. They've received, they've got guaranteed funding coming from the diocese, Canterbury Diocese, and the Great British Carnival themselves. So this is for the shortfall. You have funded this before. That was last year for £2,000. So it's a parade from 12 noon on Sunday, the 28th, which is a Sunday after St George's Day. And the parade will set off on a circuit, taking the High Street and returning to St George's Church. And will be supported by the Sambalia Once Some Drumming Band. After the return to Broad Street, the drumming and dancing will continue and a soup and spread lunch for all will be served from St George's Hall. The costumes and props for the parade will be created during the newly weekly Sunday carnival workshop sessions, which they've been having in the church hall. These sessions have been taking place on Saturday afternoons since mid-February, having been promoted widely in the 12 Ramsgate Primary Schools. The focus of the event will be a walking parade with costumes made in the workshop. We, they are saying, we want to reach as many Ramsgate residents and families as possible. The grant will cover the marketing costs to ensure this, including a cutout and keep mask for schoolchildren distributed via the book bags at schools. Thank you.
Members, comments? Councillor Green.
It does sound like a really fun event.
I second that.
That's to Nixon.
Completely separate thing, so, but bear with me a second. Whenever any of these things that we fund happen in the town centre, I always think that it could be marketed better and attended better. And I've obviously looked at the marketing implications from that since I'm, and I'm sure they're doing what they can. But I always, once and again, excuse me, as I ask, what do we do to promote people's events for the town centre? Do we?
So would you, do you get that, once they get all the literature together, we put it in the K T ad, put it online?
I assume that and I just wanted to clarify, do you understand? I know that we do, but I just wanted to know if there was anything else. There was, there was one thing with Lantern Festival or something that they can I don't know, it could have had more people there. And that's my thing. So I'm all for funding it, but I want everybody to know about it more.
Totally agree. Totally agree. We'll do what we can as town council.
Yes.
Chair, I don't know. Is this, they've done it this last year as well.
Yes.
Yeah. So they've been doing it over the years. Yeah. Yeah. And I think more or less all the residents are aware of it.
I think the good, I think the good thing is certainly from my point of view is that they've been in touch with all the 12 primary schools.
Yeah.
And, you know, and the kids are all there to take part. And I think that's a great thing for the children.
Exactly.
To take part in. Members, we've got a recommendation and seconded for to donate £2,000 out of the events fund to this. Can I have a show answer? All those in favour, please? Thank you. That's carried. Pretty good. Right. Item six is committee minutes. And this is to note the following committee minutes. There are six. So the 6th of December 2023, Planning and Infrastructure Committee. 24th of January 2024, Town Promotion Committee, a draft, so it says here. 7th of February 2024, Planning and Infrastructure. 21st of February 2024, Financial General Purposes, says draft again. 5, 6th of March 2024, Planning and Infrastructure, again. And on the 12th of March 2024, Extraordinary Town Promotion Committee.
Yes, I do, please, members. The minutes that were distributed for number six there, which is the 12th of March, the Extraordinary Town Promotion Committee, had an error within there and I've now, it's been amended. Dean had the correct file. I used the wrong one. Amended to show that both yourself, councillor Auburn and councillor Moore sent apologies for that meeting. So they have already been amended and will go to town promotion for ratification. So just so you know, it's just a no.
Councillor Green.
Yeah, pleased to see them on the agenda so everybody knows what's happened. I was going to ask if there was an update on the streetlights. Item, but there's nobody here, so it's.
I received an email advising me to something on the well, tomorrow night, actually.
Yes.
So I'm assuming that, let me apologize, I came to the council tomorrow, so I couldn't go. But so I'm assuming it's going ahead. I don't know why all councillors would get that.
No, I haven't got it.
I got one.
Okay, members, I want to, members, sorry, please. I want to take all these in one go. I'm not going to go one after the other. So if no one's got any other comments on any of them. And councillor Nixon's seconded. All in favour, please show. Thank you very much. That's carried. Right, item seven is Thanet District Council Thanet Shop Front Guide. And that's to consider a response from RTC to the consultation from TDC. Have you all seen, have you all seen it? Wherever I've done with it. Probably is somewhere. Oh, yes, there it is, just hiding. Members, if you haven't had a chance to look at it, I'm happy to give you a few minutes to digest it. But I think from my own point of view, there's basically two things that make common sense in there. And one is that we should be trying to retain our heritage shop fronts. But as they said, where new shop fronts are coming in, we should not just dismiss them because they're in a conservation area. We should be looking to see there are some modern ones that will be appropriate. So that's the only comment I would make, members. So I'll open up to you guys and girls. Councillor Austin.
I think the guy is great. I think he looks beautiful. There's lots of excellent examples of really attractive shop fronts which make the most of our heritage, including ones that are more modern and some of the older ones. I just, this is what I said in my own response to the consultation, which is, I think this is brilliant. But what force will it have? And when we go to planning committee and say, go on this, or whatever, very often when it's already been done. Planning committee does not always appear to go with, for example, conservation officers' recommendations. Sometimes for very good reasons, but I'm interested in knowing what force it will have. It's a bit like our neighbourhood plan. There are all these things that would be brilliant, but when they come up against reality, what actually is it that wins out?
Well, I think it's the mindset of the members who are on the planning as to how they, as to how they see it. And as you, as you well know, there are a number of different viewpoints about, about this type of thing. So I just think it's for us to represent Ramsgate, we need to make as good a case as possible when it comes to applications for shop fronts. Or as you said, some that's been ripped out and put plastic.
Yeah.
You know.
And.
No disrespect to the people who want it, but.
And I understand from planning officers that, for example, where historic features have already been moved and somebody else takes over that premise, they're advised by their planning consultants, I mean, their private planning consultants, that they can do what they like because nobody is going to be able to object to what they do because the historic features are already gone. So we miss the opportunities. We've discussed one very recently here and at TDC. We miss the opportunities to work with those businesses to look at possibly reinstating some of the historic features because it all happens before it's actually even got proper admissions.
I, hang on, just to answer councillor Austin, I actually think that, I've got to be careful here. But I actually think that when it comes to chains, for instance, I don't know further than that. That they will go with the cheapest and whatever that they can get.
Yeah, sure.
Whereby you've got others, especially down in Arbor Street, which have had really nice. Well done shop fronts and they're independent.
Yes.
So I think that that's what we're fighting. You're fighting big companies, I'm afraid. So but I think we've got the guideline. We need to ensure that those guidelines follow, don't we? Councillor Makeneson.
A lot of them don't even bother with planning permission.
No, they don't.
Even though it will be in a conservation area. My famous one is in the High Street where it's red. I reported it to TDC and they said, no problem. A big red road project with those phones and shopping trolleys up near Savers. Yeah. They didn't apply for planning permission. The planners weren't concerned about it at all. So it's very difficult to counter that if they don't bother.
Well, I think in that case, councillor Makeneson, that formal complaint should have been put in in relation to how it was dealt with. Councillor Austin.
There's a complaint, a couple of us, about a recent one that we've discussed here, where the work was going on on a Sunday afternoon with no application having been put in. When I consulted with the planning officers, they came back and said, we're sorry, there's nothing we can do. That the, the new design is similar enough to the design that they've ripped out, that if we were to object or if we were to complain, it would be thrown out.
There is, there is, as part of the planning act, there is, if it's, if it's a material alteration, then that requires planning.
I think it was a question of what is.
Material, for instance, if you've got, if you've got two side windows and a door in the back with a recess in the back and they change that to a
To a flat.
Flat front, that's material. But if it was, if they still kept the same shape, but changed the material, then it's not a material alteration. I know that sound, but that's the law. Councillor Green.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a good guide. Chains tend to want to go with their corporate image.
Exactly, yeah.
Rather than for the individual. What really matters though is whether our officers take this on board and whether this has any teeth. I mean, is it just a guide?
Exactly.
Or, or does it become part of?
Right. Clearly states, guide.
Or should we incorporate it into our method?
I think we should. I think we should. Especially in the conservation areas.
I know that the town park has already flagged this up to the consultant up for the neighbourhood plan. So I'm hoping that that will be able to be incorporated.
Anybody else, members? Any comment?
I'm just asking for it.
Yeah.
Could some words, some better words than I just used? But incorporation, the sense of that, could that be a part of our response?
Yeah, of course it can. Of course it can. So if you're happy to note it, together with councillor Green's comments, then I will ask deputy town clerk to raise that with the town clerk so that we can get a formal response to it.
We add to our comments, Chair, that we would like to see it very widely publicised because I think we end up with a variety of good resources lurking somewhere on the TDC website that nobody can find.
I think the idea, I think the whole idea would be if this, if and when this is agreed, if we, RTC, get it down into our main shopping areas, ourselves. I don't mind walking down and putting it through people. Give it to them. But this is what, if you're going to do it, this is what we expect. Councillor Makeneson.
Maybe it should go to the agents, estate agents.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Good point.
But normally, local estate agents don't normally deal with commercial properties too much, do they? I don't think, but.
No, they don't.
It would all be helpful.
You can do that though. Well, that's a job for you, councillor Makeneson. You're the estate agent and put it through the level. Members?
And the local surveyors.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sure about the ease with files, you don't need to.
Yeah, it could be emailed out if we've got email justice for them, yeah. Councillor Hudson.
And all the planning officers. Make sure this goes to that, should have some planning enforcement officers or officers. Planning officers.
New one coming in.
Councillors who are on the planning committee.
Well, I think all members, all members should have it. Yeah, and the town councils and parish councils, whatever. Yeah.
Have it, even though it's still only a guide.
Yeah.
Better to have it than not to have it.
Planning officers will already have it because there was already a design shop front, design about 20 odd years ago. And effectively it was only black and white. And it was to basically re-gent and put in colour. That's effectively what it is. Councillor Makeneson.
The town team in the past, and they're talking about it there, has given out grants for new shop fronts. And I don't think we would give it, not that we have much say anymore, but if we did, I don't think we'd give one to a shop that was, you know, all plastic.
Yeah, no, the past and we won't.
No, we wouldn't do it.
Let's probably put them towards this.
Okay, members, so you all agreed to know and and we'll take on board what councillor Green said and we'll ask the town clerk to respond on behalf of our RTC. Thank you. That's agreed. Right, item eight. Electoral review of Thanet. Interesting item. This is to receive a Thanet member's briefing packed. Pack, I should say, not packed. Thanet Parish Council's presentation regarding the electoral review by Thanet, for Thanet, sorry. Don't got my glasses on. It is recommended that this matter be referred to the F and GP committee for a response. That's down to you, David. If, if the F and GP committee consider this on the 22nd of May, the committee would need to be delegated the power to formulate a response. There would not be sufficient time to bring the matter back to the council for resolution. I would certainly recommend that that is. certainly uh recommend that that is the case, um because we've, we've run out of time. So I'm going to propose that. Is there a second, just for that particular part? Councillor Austin? Um do members want to discuss this now? That's agreed.
TDC has already decided to reduce the number of its, its councillors.
Yeah.
We don't have to follow suit if we don't want to. We could just carry on with our existing wards and existing numbers.
Yeah.
That's one option.
Yeah.
The other option is to, to ask the boundary commission to change our situation at the same time as, 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 as they do TDC.
Yeah.
That's basically it.
That's basically what it is, isn't it?
Two options that make sense.
Yeah.
Um, so. The dynamics, the numbers, the numbers game, that, that the boundary commission has to imply with, that is to make all the wards basically the same size.
Yeah.
Uh is terribly complicated.
Yeah.
So I don't think we can get involved in that.
No, because the, the, sorry, David, sorry.
You know, that's, that, that's basically the, the decision that we've been, been to take.
Yeah.
Is whether to, to follow suit with them, or whether to keep on going.
I think the difficulty is in, in this particular paper, this one, is that the um review that they've given, I can't remember the area, which, where it was now, um, see the bar, something like that? But they've given, when they sorted out the, the wards, they were basically five to five and a half thousand residents in each ward, but of course you're talking a, you're talking a community of seventy thousand.
Yeah.
We're, what are we, forty thousand, aren't we, I think? Forty thousand. So obviously, then you've got to squeeze that down to, into the wards and whatever. Councillor Huxley? Oh, okay.
Yeah. I think, I think the. Match the numbers of the new.
It would make more sense.
Because otherwise it doesn't really make sense.
Yeah.
That does make sense.
Yes, it'd be easier.
But it doesn't, I think it's better if it matches Thanet District Council, all the wall plant trees.
Hmm.
You can still keep the same amount of.
The other characteristic, in fact, is the new build.
Yeah.
Particularly the new build, it's going to affect north.
But mainly new, to be honest.
Yeah.
All those ones near.
Yeah, so I think that needs, that needs to be looked at as well. So councillor Makeneson?
Do it with the new build. I know they don't all necessarily follow the local plan. But that is the guide, isn't it? That, that parcels of land are allocated for housing development, for housing houses. So they would have some idea that these were built, how many more of the.
To, yeah, talking to TDC officers.
Yeah.
They feel that the new build along the new hand route should, although some of it would be in the villagers' ward now.
Yeah.
They don't think they should be after the review, because they would, they would dominate the.
Villages.
The village.
Imagine.
The villagers' ward.
Right.
Yes.
So they think that they should be in the, the Ramsgate wards, um.
Yeah, Northwood and New Inter.
But they have some idea of numbers, don't they?
Yeah, yeah, they have some ideas. So when they know where they have sold and all that sort of stuff.
Hmm. Anybody else? Any saying? No? So if you're happy, if members are happy, then um this will go to F and G P. And um for discussion then to get a formal uh kind of response to that. And I think we need to talk to the town clerk before that happens.
Yeah.
We need to talk to Laura before that happens about.
Yeah, I don't think we need to talk to her ourselves.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Might be a good idea to get one down, if you think.
Yeah.
Do that.
Yeah. I don't think he said I'm really in G P meetings, I mean, go to them. I mean, I think this is, is something that's really crucial for us to all understand. We've come back to the council, hasn't it, obviously?
Yeah, I mean, it, it should do. But this, this, this same for F and G P to make the decision, so.
Yeah.
One thing that could happen, which I would find quite attractive, is that we could end up with more councillors for Ramsgate uh at the town council level.
Hmm.
Than at the TDC level. So we went all in the future, that we wouldn't always all be two of us.
Two of us, yeah. So where, so where you've got of all the two, two members, we could ask for three.
Yeah.
Because effectively, what they, they're just saying, you can have like three, 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 three. You can't have three, one, and then a two, and then something else. They need, it needs to be consistent. Councillor Evanson, did you want to?
No, I was just musing on.
Oh, musing. I thought, wonder what.
Musing, yeah.
Musing. So members, or, Councillor Huxley?
My. They're reducing the number, so it would be the same for the parishes as well, no?
That's a no.
So why is it different for Thanet District Council then?
Because Thanet District Council are, are reducing the areas.
No, but they're increasing the, the size of the wards.
Yeah, but.
And they're reducing the number of councillors.
It doesn't, it does, but we don't necessarily, even so, you don't necessarily have to go with what TDC are doing.
I'm not sure about that.
Oh, well, but I'm.
No, that's right, I've checked, I've checked.
Well, that doesn't make sense.
I know, well, what does?
This is a small. You could actually, any other more councillors here, as you said.
Yeah.
What's the point in that?
This only affects TDC unless we ask it.
So you. So in fact, you could do nothing here.
We could do nothing.
Yeah, if you want to.
Okay, that doesn't really make sense to me, I.
I don't, I don't understand it.
No.
Why you wouldn't do the same rule, different layers.
Well, I agree. I think it comes to common sense, really, but, hey, we're talking government here, we're not, you know, we're not talking local logic.
Kent as well.
Yeah.
Kent Council, so they changing their.
I don't know, I haven't got a clue what Kent are doing, I haven't got a clue.
One thing I think is particularly important is that we keep the town back.
Yes.
Yeah, and they can't allow that, this is next farmers, isn't it?
Yeah, it's not going to happen anyway, no. Okay, members, can I just have a vote of agreement, please, if you're happy to? This goes forward to F and G P. Keep your wive or your favour, please, show it. Thank you. Right, item nine, by-election polling cards. As, as you remember, members are asked to agree a policy about the use of polling cards for the election. Uh should there be, should they be used on, I should go off now, or not? The cost to add on polling cards for a one-wall by-election is in the region of a thousand pound. It is not compulsory to use polling cards, but we should be consistent, which, uh, which hasn't always been faced. Um I don't quite, I can't quite follow that somehow, that we're not being consistent, but we never want to be consistent.
What did you do last time?
Yeah.
I think the town clerk is saying that we should be consistent.
Well, I know what she's, but it don't really, it doesn't read right, but we should be consistent. But if we've not been consistent, we, we should be consistent by being not consistent. That's, that's how it reads.
Yeah.
So.
All right.
Yes.
Thought it could get told off by the town clerk, by the town clerk. Um.
I would propose that in the future, we do have polling cards, we are consistent about.
Agree.
From a budget point of view, we put money aside.
Yeah.
Each, each, each year to enable us to do that.
Councillor Austin?
Having been involved in a by-election just recently in Westgate-on-Sea for the town council, we had a lot of complaints from residents that they hadn't received polling cards, which we passed through to electoral services who, who proved that they had actually delivered them. But a lot of people concerned that they hadn't had a polling card. I didn't know that I, that there was an election until I got your piece of literature, or whatever. But increasingly few people bring them to the polling station because they've been told they don't have to. It does still seem to be a very useful way of letting people know, particularly people who live in flats with no external access, where you can't get your literature through the door anyway. They still get their polling card, and at least they know there's a by-election happening.
Especially I'm in favour of it.
Yeah. Yeah.
That we should do that.
Yeah.
I'm going to propose that we go along with the.
Councillor Green's already proposed.
Oh, sorry, David, you wouldn't. Oh, no, but you didn't add the thousand pound.
They'd set money aside each year.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you said.
Oh, but he's the chairman of F and G P, so they've decided.
Just trying to be accurate.
Thank you.
Yeah. All in favour, please show. Thank you. Right, that's that done. Right, I'm now, we now move on to item ten, which is uh confidential matters. And uh I'm now going to ask for a vote to exclude uh the public and the press, uh as it's in relation to uh private matters concerning uh, well, I can't say if we're in public. All right, so.
Seconda?
So, seconda?
Yeah.
All in favour, please show. Thank you. I'm sorry to those online, but.